Well, we've lost our interim city manager. Oh, here she comes. [laughing] We welcome everyone to the city council meeting of the city of McMinnville on January 10th, 2017, and we open the meeting. Again, it's good to look out and see a number of individuals in attendance tonight. We have three of our candidates for our city mayor or our city manager position, and they've been with us this afternoon. We treated you even with some snow, so thank us. Again, welcome to these individuals. What I'd like to do tonight is, as we call this to order, remind you that these proceedings are being recorded and broadcast by KLYC and MCM. If you have a cellphone, if you would turn those off or mute them. If you do get a call and need to take it, we'd ask you to go out to the lobby and to take your calls so that we wouldn't have interference in our meeting this evening. We'll go ahead this evening and start with a pledge of allegiance, and we've asked Larry Yoder to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry, for leading us in that. Tonight, we start our meeting out with an invitation to citizens for public comment. Anyone interested in the audience to provide comments on anything, may speak on any topic other than, number one, a topic already that's on the agenda; number two, a matter that is in litigation; number three, a quasi judicial land use matter, or for a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Do we have anyone in the group that would like to speak to us? Go ahead, come up and...
I don't know if I understood what you said. I do have a comment I'd like to make.
Okay, so come on out. If it's not on the agenda...
No.
Okay, come in and sign up in and write down your name.
Okay.
And introduce yourself and write your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm Larry Larson. I live on Arthur Street, just a nice walk to the southwest of here. Let me get this done, then I'll... Between the 17th and the 28th of last month, I trapped nine rats at home. On the 7th, I got number 10. I talked with the Public Works Director. I talked with the County Health Department and was given some good information. I was told by the Health Department, there are no funds to have a vector control program like in our larger counties to the north and east. Understandable. Pam Ramsey, the city code enforcement officer, called me, and we had a nice chat, and she said, "Citywide, they've been receiving a lot of complaints about rats, and there appears to be nothing organized to control this." My opinion, quick and short, there needs to be some kind of an awareness program, be it a flyer, be it the newspaper, be it whatever. But it's not, you never have one rat. If you've got one, you've got a thousand, my opinion, a lot of people's opinion. So there needs to be an awareness of it. There needs to be information as to how to prevent it, and there needs to be action by people. It was suggested to me that I carry the ball and go around and start banging on doors, and one person isn't going to do it. I have the wonder that maybe there's people setting food out for Fido and Tiffy at night and maybe setting garbage out even. I can't, you know, I don't know, but I think a rat will find a nice storm dry place, which happened to be my house, and we are very careful about not leaving foodstuffs out, very careful. But I've also read that they will travel from their nice warm habitat to find food, somewhere they're getting fed. I would hope that nobody's setting food out purposely to feed the nocturnal opportunists. Like, one instance, I know of a party that was setting food out in the evening, and they'd watch all the, until they got skunks under their house. At which point, they found where the skunks got in, created a one-way door that allowed easy egress but not reentry, and they learned their lesson. But there needs to be something happening, in my opinion, citywide, to address it, to make people aware, to be careful about not feeding them.
In your dealing with this, Larry, have you found, what have you learned? Are they nesting around? Are there nests around you, or do you just...
They got into my attic.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. Now, how they got under the house, I cannot figure it out. How they got into the attic, several years ago, we took an unused chimney out from the center of the house, and I got real diligent about mouse-proofing it. But mouse-proofing and rat-proofing means I get to go back down there again and do some more. But that's the only place that they could have gotten into the attic. And it sounded for a while like they were running Olympic races back and forth, so our attic is decked. But anyway, I've been real diligent about keeping them trapped. I've gotten, you don't want to walk through my attic between the sticky pads and the traps, I'll tell you. But I think something, something citywide should happen, because like the code enforcement lady, she was, we had a nice chat, and she said they've been getting complaints from all over town. So something, you know, it might be the season, it might be some kind of a weather cycle, who knows what it is, the cold and wet, but I think something official, organized, be it the paper, be it the city, be it somebody, something should happen to put a stop to this, or at least try to reduce it as much as possible.
Any questions for Larry from the council?
I was just curious, could you elaborate where do you live?
Pardon?
Where do you live?
Arthur Street, which is down Second Town Wood, turn left, go up, take the first right, and I live on the first block. It's just a nice walk from here.
Southwest portion?
Southwest.
Okay.
I've talked with a half a dozen neighbors, and nobody else has had a problem with them that they are aware of.
Aware of, okay.
But then, okay, that points a finger at me. Am I feeding them? No, I'm not feeding them. But it would, it's something I wanted to...
But they communicated that it's nice and warm in your attic, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's nice. That's what I've been doing with this crappy weather, is working upstairs on a project, and it's nice and warm. But I did read that once they find a nice warm place, then they will travel at length for food. And I would hope that nobody is leaving it out for them, but somewhere there has to be.
You know, I lived in the Philippines for...
I lived in the Philippines for two years, and one of the areas that I lived in had a fish drying factory right across the street from my house. We had some rats.
Yeah.
It was pretty bad, so...
Yeah, well, there was some people, lived a ways behind us some years, about ten years ago, that were stacking their garbage in a utility trailer. And we had... we were in the process of taking out a great big laurel hedge, and the previous owner had put a whole bunch of firewood under it, and it kind of got overgrown. We took the laurel, all the wood out to cut the hedge out, and the rats, or the yellow jackets, moved into it first, which kind of meant removal, and then the rats moved into it from over there. But I gave them a little bit of feed.
Any other questions for Larry from the council?
Mayor, just maybe a comment, perhaps something on our city website, the seasonal changes. I know that could be bringing them in.
Oh, yeah. I don't disagree that the weather is having an effect on it, but the thing that concerns me is that people, maybe even without realizing it, are setting food out for them.
Yeah.
And that's where I, you know, my thinking on the awareness needs to come in is, don't feed anything outside. We put sewage out for the birds and seeds out for the squirrels, and it comes in every night. We do not leave it out, so...
Well, Larry, thank you for your comments, and what we will do is, we're going to reach out to the county public health and be making a number of calls and getting some...
Yeah, I talked with them, and they said, "Well, there's, you know, Multnomah County, Washington County, et cetera, have got a great vector control program. There just isn't the funding here to do that," which...
But as a city, we will contact them. That maybe pulls a little more weight.
Yeah.
And then maybe we can work with Tom to do an editorial piece on that, to get something...
An awareness, that would be...
In the paper.
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing, to make an awareness and make it citywide, area-wide. You know, the fact that it exists, what not to do, what to do, what not to do.
We'll follow up on that, so thank you so very much for...
Thank you.
...the input, and we love to hear from citizens, and anything that we can do, we will step forward. So Candace will follow up on that, so...
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing none, then we will move on. It is with sadness tonight that I am going to read a proclamation. We have a counselor that has served us for many, many years that is going off the council tonight, and I have a proclamation, and I think what we're going to do... If Counselor Yoder would...
With me? I guess we don't want to stand in the light and be blinded, but we truly have an individual here that has served this community for more than twelve years appropriately, and we have a real thank you tonight to give Larry Yoder. If I may, let me read this proclamation. Whereas Larry Yoder began his service to the city of McMinnville when he was appointed to the Planning Commission on March twenty-ninth, or March ninth, two thousand and four, and whereas Counselor Yoder was elected as a city council for Ward Three and served three, four-year terms beginning December two thousand and five. Whereas Counselor Yoder served over twenty-five years in various management positions within the agricultural community, and whereas Counselor Yoder has an amazing ability to manage finances and personnel and is excellent with customer relations. And whereas Counselor Yoder has volunteered for the Sheridan Chamber of Commerce, Oregon Feeding Grain Association, as past president and board member, and as a board member of the Agricultural Co-op Council of Oregon. And whereas Counselor Yoder has served as a liaison and board member to the McMinnville Community Media, known as M C M, a member of the Parkway Committee, and as council president. And whereas Counselor Yoder's passion to serve this community is admirable. And whereas Counselor Yoder served the community for decades, not only in civic and professional ways, but in a very personal way by caring for many foster children. And whereas Counselor Yoder served with a kind and gracious spirit. And whereas Counselor Yoder is widely known for his quiet but deep and sparkling sense of humor. And whereas Counselor Yoder has a great and wonderful, good sense of humor. Whereas Counselor Yoder's family has been a strong support system to him over the years of service. And whereas Counselor Yoder's sense of service, commitment to the community is valued by the citizens of McMinnville. Now therefore, I, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim January tenth, two thousand and seventeen, as Larry Yoder Day. And in the city of McMinnville, urging the citizens to reflect on the passion, the leadership of his caring of this community-minded counselor. In witness thereof, I have here to forset my hand to cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed to this tenth day of January two thousand and seventeen. Scott A. Hill, Mayor. So appropriate to have a standing ovation. You know, that's a proclamation that we do here today, but we wanted him to remember us a little bit, and so we're not going to be as lengthy in this, but we have a plank that honors and thanks Larry Yoder for his years of dedicated, professional, loyal, and outstanding service to the citizens of McMinnville as a city councilor, January two thousand and five through December two thousand and sixteen, presented by the city of McMinnville. Larry? We're not going to let him go without saying a few words, but personally, there's three of us, Kelly, who started a little before us, myself and Larry, that came on the council at the same time, and the bond that we have built as counselors, not only do we have the respect for one another, but we have truly become close and dear friends that will last for a lifetime, I'm sure. But Larry, a few words if you would.
Well, first of all, I have to say thank you to the... those of you that have been putting up with me for the last twelve years and shorter times. I appreciate it. Like Scott said, the friendship that we have developed is priceless, and you will always be my friends, and I admire, respect you, and I'm going to be rooting for you to keep this thing going, because we have a great thing going here. The city of McMinnville's the greatest city around, and we're so honored to have the privilege to serve. And I've told so many people that, you know, being on the city council has been one of the most rewarding and fun things that I think I've ever done in my life. I have thoroughly enjoyed it. So why are you leaving? Well, it's just one of those things where you get that gut feeling, it's just time to move on. And so, turn it over to some young people. My hair can't get any grayer, so we're going to let the young ones get the gray hair. But I have thoroughly appreciated it. I've enjoyed it. I have no regrets. I'd do it again in a heartbeat, but I'd start a little younger than what I did. So thank you very much for all of this. It's more than I deserve.
Larry, and if you would take the message home to your family, how much we appreciate their support over the years, your wife and your kids. I mean, we're only able to serve at the ability that our family will allow us to, and your years of service, so take that message home to the family. Momentum of your time on the council, and you're going to be able to do something that you've not done in many, many years, and that is, you can sit with the audience, or you can go home early. So we're going to watch and see what you do.
I may do both.
And Larry is going to help us with our interviewing process over the next couple of days, and he has so much insight that we want that to happen, so, Larry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
So now, we've got David, if you'd come down, and Kelly, if you'd come down, and Adam and Wendy, if you would come up.
Wendy jumped the gun. She got... she was too eager. It's from all those years on the Planning Commission. So if I could have the three of you stand on my right. I see Wendy was smart enough to bring her cheat sheet with her. Kelly, so you know your name is? Oh, Adam has this too, all right. Kelly's done this before. She's memorized it. So if you could, all three of you, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm... That I will support the Constitution of the United States... And of the state of Oregon. And that I will, to the best of my ability... Perform the duties of the office of city councilor... Of the city of McMinnville... During my continuance therein... So help me God. Congratulations.
Take your seats. Doesn't that look nice?
Mr. Mayor? It's like deja vu all over again.
I had a run-through, so I should be able to do this, huh? That's right.
You can look over my shoulder. I, Scott Hill.
Raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand, thank you. Start over. I, Scott Hill.
I, Scott Hill.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
And that I will, to the best of my ability...
Perform the duties of the office of mayor.
Perform the duties of the office of mayor...
Of the city of McMinnville.
Of the city of McMinnville...
During my continuance therein...
During my continuance therein...
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for being a part of that, those in the audience. Very important in our local government to go through an election and have the kind of quality that we have sitting up at the dais tonight. It makes Candace's job, my job, department head jobs, much better to have citizens that are passionate about living in our community and taking of their time and their effort to make sure the policies and procedures in this city are what they need to be. At this point, we are to a point where we are going to have an election of the city or the council president, and if I may, we have had just a great service rendered to us this year with Counselor Jeffries as our counselor and council president. I've had an opportunity to spend a couple of days with our ex-mayor, Rick Olson, and Rick just wanted me to share how much and how appreciative he is of the partnership that Kevin had with Rick as mayor over the last two years. Many of us have had this opportunity to serve as a council president, but none of us have had an opportunity to kind of be an interim mayor and be carrying as much on his shoulders as Kevin has done, and as a council, we recognize that. We thank you. And so, you know, as we talk a little bit about the role of the council president, what the council president does is, in the mayor's absence, he presides over the councils, the deliberations, preserves order, and sometimes that's very hard. Enforces the rules of the council and determines the order of business under the rules of the council while continuing to vote as a counselor. And so, again, at this point, I would like to thank Kevin and give him an applause for his term of duty. So our next piece of business tonight would be to ask any councilor if they would like to make nominations for council president.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Counselor Menke as our move that she be the next council president.
It has been a move that we appoint Counselor Menke as our council president. Do I have a second?
One second.
Counselor Jeffries, any discussion around the table? All those in favor of Kelly Menke being council president for the next two years, please indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show that the voting has been unanimous, and so Kelly, congratulations. We'll have a fun time. We'll learn together, right? And so, with that being taken care of, let's move on to our agenda tonight. Tonight, we have in front of us, and we'll put it up for those that are in the audience, but we have a resolution, Resolution twenty seventeen dash three. And I think what I'm going to do is turn some time over to David, just to share a little bit where we've come from and what we're doing tonight.
Thank you. So the city was approached several weeks ago by a community organization that we work closely with called Unidos, expressing some concern about tensions and mood in the community surrounding some of the statements that have been made over the past several months concerning immigration and the status of immigrants and refugees in this country, and concerned about how our own community might respond to situations involving those folks. We had a very good meeting, and it has always been the McMinnville way, to be very inclusive, and so we set about to work with Sally, with Unidos, on coming up with a declaration by the council that would express the city's continuing support and partnership with that organization and with that community within McMinnville. And as we were putting together the resolution to discuss the desire of the city to be known as an inclusive city for all persons, recognized that there was perhaps an interest in going a bit further than that. And so, an alternative resolution was prepared that was much broader. That's the resolution that's before you tonight. After discussion with council during the dinner session, was agreed that this was the form of res- the form of resolution that would come forward tonight. So, I don't know if you'd like it read, or at least I could, I can read the, the title of the resolution, which is "A Resolution to Declare the City of McMenville as an Inclusive City for All Persons Regardless of Race, Color, National Origin, Immigration or Refugee Status, Religion, Sex, Gender Identity (including Gender Expression), Sexual Orientation, Mental and Physical Ability, Age or Economic Status."
I think at this point, let's just open it up to the council to, if, share any thoughts, comments, or any questions that they may have. So I think I'll start with Alan.
Yeah, there's, we had a little bit of discussion about mental and physical ability, that we should add in emotional ability also. I'd like to see that changed in there. So mental, and physical, and emotional ability.
So noted. Remy?
I, I was pleased to have this come before us tonight, and, and the chance to review was, was good, and I'm happy to be, to have this go forward.
Thank you. Wendy?
There was, we had talked about, there's a disabilities, that we were going to change over to mental, emotional, and physical abilities in the first paragraph. But I, I'm in support of this. I think it's really important for us as a community to be clear about what type of community we're building. And I think it's great to be ahead of the curve and to be clear amongst ourselves about being inclusive. And so I think it's great.
Thank you. Kevin?
I really want to thank the community members who are coming forward with this. This is Sally. And as you mentioned earlier, Scott, there's so much negativity and uncertainty in our country right now, and I think this is putting us in a very positive direction, and I, I'm just very grateful for the, the vision that they had to do this now. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll go to Adam and end with council president Menke. Adam?
Other than the typos that have already been noted by Wendy and Alan, it was a great discussion tonight, and I think it's a broad statement for our city to be on the forefront of that, and I'm happy to be a part of it.
Thank you. Kelly?
I'm firmly in support of this, and as amended, and look forward to seeing it as made city law.
Great. Candace, any comments from your perspective, as you've worked with us on this?
No, I'm, I'm also very grateful for getting to work with Sally and, and her wonderful group. And the one thing that I do know that there was some discussion about was whether or not this should go up on the website, and I love council guidance on that. I'm assuming that the answer is yes.
I think so.
Okay. And so the audience knows Sally Goddard has offered to translate this for us into Spanish, so we can put it on our website in both languages, which I think is very important.
And then I'm going to ask Chief Matt, your thoughts, because you've been in on the discussions with us, and we've kept you out of this, but your initial thoughts tonight?
My initial thoughts are, I think it's, it's an excellent opportunity for the city to, I think, formalize the manner in which we already do business and just codify the fact that we are an inclusive community that welcomes everybody, no matter where you come from, no matter what your disabilities are. So I'm all for this. I think Unidos is doing a fantastic job of, of helping lead the city through some, some times that are a little bit more politically uncomfortable for some, so I think it's a great, it's a great opportunity.
And I, I know Matt and I and Sheriff Tim are looking forward to next Tuesday night, coming to your meeting and being able to articulate to the group. And Sally, again, I thank you from, it shows that the process works of coming in and talking and educating us a little bit. You guys have been doing that over a period of probably the last year, but coming directly to us and we bringing the right people around the table, and then walking away, having faith in us, and then seeing the end product that comes out, which is much more inclusive, and I think a much better piece of ordinance that we're going to do than we started out thinking. And so, again, it started with you guys. Thank you, because we have a lot on the plate, you know, and, and it's, it, a lot of things that we're trying to do and some transitioning up here, but we can still get where we need to in a very, I think, a very timely manner. So thank you. So if I'm not mistaken, and I'll turn to the two on my side, we're to a point where we could turn this into Resolution 3, and, and, and vote on it tonight with the corrections that have been noted. And David, you've, you've picked up on those corrections, correct?
Yes.
Is that what the council would like us to do?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll turn it over.
I'll, I'll read the title of the resolution again. It's Resolution Number 2017-03, "A Resolution to Declare the City of McMenville as an Inclusive City for All Persons Regardless of Race, Color, National Origin, Immigration or Refugee Status, Religion, Sex, Gender Identity (including Gender Expression), Sexual Orientation, Mental, Emotional, and Physical Ability, Age or Economic Status."
And so all of the councillors that are in, and this is a resolution?
Yeah, so you want to motion to?
A move to adopt the resolution as edited and presented.
Okay. Okay, it has been moved by Counselor Drapkin and seconded by Counselor Strassens.
Stassen.
Stassen, we'll get that. That we accept Resolution 2017-03. All in favor, so indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a nay? It's unanimously been passed by the council to accept this resolution. And thank you. Our next item on our agenda tonight is a work session, and it's a, an item that we've had other discussion around, and, and it's "Bag It Better." And so, do I turn it over to you to start our discussion?
You certainly may. I'm not going to say much, except that in the, from the time that I retired from the city, a year and a bit ago, until the time I came back, this wonderful and amazing group of people who really care about our environment got together and came up with the idea that McMenville really needs to ban the single-use plastic bags that people use to carry things out of grocery stores. So apparently, there was quite a bit of work that the group did with the council in my absence. I come back as the interim city manager and say, "Oh, we've got to get going on this. This is a grand idea." So we're kind of starting from scratch, even though I know this group has already presented to the council a few times, but with the council's indulgence, I would love to have tonight as a work session. Two weeks from tonight, I have a public hearing where anybody in the community who wants to come and talk to us about single-use plastic bags can come. And two weeks after that, I would think that we could probably have an ordinance in place. I think David only has a very few things he needs to pick up on before he can craft that ordinance, and then any changes that need to be made after the public hearing. And so then we would have an ordinance in place fairly shortly. The one thing for anybody who hasn't been in on this process so far, and I know that the group that speaks tonight will talk about this, but we will be phasing this in a little bit, because people do have stacks and stacks, I'm sure, in their back rooms of plastic bags that they probably need to use up. So we're going to try to be very feeling and understanding about what people need to do to get into this new habit, but we just had a report at the dinner meeting tonight that in California, it's, it's just de rigueur. Everybody's completely used to it in the cities that have adopted these ordinances. So with that said, I think we're probably ready to start the work session.
Would, would we invite members of Zero Waste to come up? And so, representatives from Zero Waste, if you'd come and, up, and we can utilize your expertise as we answer questions, because tonight, what we really would like to do is be able to come up with a direction for staff to put this together. And so, again, at some point, if you'd sign in, but we know you guys, but if you'd sign in, and I'm just going to open up to the, to, to the council. Melissa has put some information down for us and some questions that might be appropriate to ask or get further direction on, but again, tonight, we would like to really have this work session to get to a, kind of the bottom line of what we're willing to do and, and what we can do and what's appropriate. So I'll open it up to a work session.
So if I, if I'll just tee it off here, there was a background memo, as, as Mayor mentioned, and, and we really focused in on, the, the background material that was provided in your packet was a summation of the ordinances of the five cities in Oregon that have passed plastic bag ordinances or plastic bag bans. This summary was compiled by Zero Waste and presented to the city for consideration. And reviewing through those ordinances and the summaries, there were seven primary policy points where the, the cities treated the, the issue a little, a little different, each one. So, you know, of course, the first threshold question is, does the city want to move forward with a, an ordinance to encourage folks to "bag it better" within the city? And, and if so, then we have to draft up and, and take a look at what the shape of that ordinance is, and, and assuming we would model our ordinance as closely as possible to those that have come before us in the other cities, there are just some policy points that need to be determined here. And, and with that, I'd, I'd like to hand it over to the Zero Waste folks to maybe lead us through those one at a time, and, and, and we can talk about, the council could talk about what direction they might want to give me as I, as I refine that ordinance, that draft ordinance, and bring it back to the city for public hearing.
So wel, welcome comments from Zero Waste.
Do you want to introduce, or?
You go ahead, Steve.
Okay. Steve Iverson, 1033 Southwest Courtney Laney Drive in McMenville. Thank you for inviting us. We're always eager to address the city and work on this problem, because we think it's going to be an important step, small step, but an important step for us and for the city. Zero Waste is all about reducing what goes to landfill. Plastic bags go to landfill. We'd like to do something about it. Other cities have done it, and we think that gives us models to follow and, and models in implementation and outreach to the public, and we're all about that. So we are ready to roll. So we were going to go through these policy considerations one by one. The first one is... Yeah, where's my cheat sheet?
How to define the term reusable?
Someone stole it.
Because I, I, what I did was, I listed the response of each city to each of these policy considerations. Now, I don't know, for number one, how do we define a reusable bag? If you want me to actually read what each city has done or just summarize it briefly?
Summary.
Yeah.
We have a lot of the info in our packet already.
Yeah, well, okay. In general, they, they just define what's a reusable bag and what's a plastic, an acceptable plastic bag, and then they give different minimum thicknesses for acceptable plastic bags. And these would be these, like a department store-type bag, a heavy-duty plastic bag, is allowed under all these ordinances. They differ in the thickness allowed. Four mils is a common standard, and two and a quarter mils is another common standard. Only Corvallis goes with a thinner bag, and all the other cities specify four mils. And our recommendation is that four mils is the way to go, because it's more liable to be reused as a reusable plastic bag, if it's that thick. The, the ordinances in the other cities are all very similar. Some say it's a bag of cloth, or a reusable bag is a bag of cloth or other material with handles. Sometimes they specify that. Forest Grove takes an additional step, and I'm sure since you've read the ordinances, you are aware of this, but they specify that if the plastic bag has a minimum plastic thickness of four mils, it doesn't, it must not contain lead, cadmium, or any other heavy metal in toxic amounts, as defined by applicable state and federal standards and regulations for packaging of reusable bags. You know, that's a fine point, but it could be important. And Forest Grove also prohibits the use of plastic-like compostable checkout bags, those green, and they truly are compostable under ASTM standards, but Forest Grove doesn't want them to be used in their stores.
And to articulate the reason for that, which is sort of an anomaly in this question, is the Metro III County area has decided to very aggressively compost food waste. And to eliminate any strange things that show up in compostable products, which actually aren't compostable, they've decided to throw them all out, because if the wrong "compostable", air quote, things get into their cycle of composting, it can actually destroy the end product compost, and inevitably, it just has to be thrown away. So there have just decided, because they have such a huge population base, and there's no way to articulate every single product that comes through, they've just decided to eliminate completely, in this area, anything that has the term "compostable."
Interesting.
So that's an important part.
And I think that's really important, in that we've just moved to, in that direction of not only yard debris, but compostable food.
Exactly.
And, and Fred has come and talked to us a little bit, what that looks like, and I'm guessing that within six months, we'll have our first report on how that piece is going, but I know that they've got their pickup down now, because I know my recyclables went into their compostable the first time, and so I'm thinking they had a mess. But this morning, they were on time, they took the right things, and so I think we're going to see some, some better things happen.
The more, the more simple we can keep this for the public, the more successful it's going to be. So it's something to think, keep in mind through this whole ordinance process.
So, as was mentioned earlier, I was just recently in California, and that this is everywhere, so you just have to bring your own bags in, and there was no, no problem with it anywhere. But as easy as it was, it did make me look into how California adopted their plastic bag bans. And this first question actually came up a lot, and was something that was abused and caused some problems for some cities. And so a number of cities had to go back in and really rework the term "reusable bag" to, to add clarity, to alleviate some of those. And, and one of the definitions that came up and that became part of the, the lexicon was that it was "machine washable," and, and would withstand a minimum number of uses, which then varied from 100, 125, 150 uses, but, but those were two criteria that San Francisco and Los Angeles and a number of other large cities ended up incorporating, so that stores didn't just opt for a slightly heavier plastic bag, that still was really becoming a single-use plastic bag.
And then note, California's a huge state with a lot of big-box stores that buy in bulk, and so we have tried to find out, you know, not reinventing the mousetrap, what they've done. So when Safeway buys something generically, they like to just buy one type of bag to sell to the public, for instance, as a bag that you could use 125 times. So it's good to look into those things, if you're going to get that articulate, as to what's already been done, so it's just consistent over the whole, because this is a wave that's taking place all around.
You know, I, I was made aware of, was in Walmart the other day, and this has been on my mind, and all of a sudden, it just dawned on me at Walmart that their checkout is all set around reusable bags, and I mean, they don't even fill them to the, what I would call a usable, they just, the plat, what did I say?
Reusable.
Reusable, so the plastic bags. And so it came to me, you know, it would be interesting to see how they've, in California and the other areas, kind of changed that checkout to accommodate.
The gentleman who runs the sustainability project at Walmart is a big fan of ours and, and a big champion of us, I think. And so...
You could pull the microphone a little closer to you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're not getting picked up on that.
Okay. The gentleman at Walmart is a big, a big fan of ours, and, and we're a big fan of his, because Walmart does this incredible job of sustainability and recycling. And so Walmarts who have been, in cities where there's And so Walmarts who have been, in cities where this is mandated already, have already gone through that process. So when we ask them, this local Walmart, are you opposed? Do you think it's a good idea? They basically, among the big-box stores, just threw up their arms and said, it's being done in a lot of other places, it seems to be working, we'll do what the city tells us to do, it's up to you. So Walmart will change its behavior based on the ordinance. And once again, we've tried to look at what Walmarts and other places have done, and it should be a pretty easy transfer of behavior and, you know, their mechanisms.
Thank you, Ramsey. Let's continue down the questions and definitions and... Do we have enough clarity around, okay, David feels that we're feeling...
Well, no, yeah, I just, any other comments from council on the recommendation from Zero Waste regarding the definition?
Yeah, I like, go ahead, Alan.
If I could just get a couple of questions answered. Did the California statewide ban pass on the ballot in November?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's in effect right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I know that we were down in California a couple of years ago, and it was kind of awkward because you have city limits putting up to each other. One would be, you know, using reusables, the other would have the plastic bags. And so you'd step across the street and get plastic bags. So it was a little bit awkward. And then Hawaii, we've been in, and they just have a great system going there that's been in place for a couple of years now. Yeah. Thank you.
Mayor? I would like to just, if we're going point by point here, I'm okay with doing the four-mil, having that higher standard. I don't think we need to get into the deeper dive of the...
Washable.
Yeah, I mean, I worry about who's going to certify that, you know, it's, I don't know. I'm comfortable with just...
Yeah, we really should at least kind of define it tonight, what we do think we want.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we've talked about a number of different things. It'd be helpful for David, I think, yes.
Yeah, I mean, four mils, if you have your little dial deal, you can verify that pretty quickly.
Absolutely.
Very clear.
Any other comments?
See if you can tear it, Mayor.
Is that a five-mil?
This, I believe, is a four-mil bag. If you want to pass it around and feel it is.
So in most cities, it's considered a reusable plastic bag.
And what's the cost on that?
I have no idea. Probably very low.
It feels really thin, so...
Why is this, why is the four-mil bag an acceptable standard for you versus the... Sorry. Yeah, why is the four-mil acceptable?
Once again, not having to reinvent the wheel, it's the most uniform mil that all the bag makers use for, you know, like when you go to Ross or Panties and get a big garment, that's sort of what the size they use, so. But we wanted to get down to the lowest that was used for those reasons, and then have a cutting point where you start to get into the single-use grocery bag, which is what we're trying to get away from. So we found that the four-mil was pretty much where that line is.
Okay.
But I, I would quickly just...
This is a smaller step.
I would quickly just add, I'm sure all of you have carried in groceries before in that half-mil and had a handle rip out. Compared to a four-mil, you get a lot more use out of it. You can probably rewash it. If you've ever tried washing a half-mil bag, it's probably not going to work real well. Whereas a four-mil is a little thicker, a little more rigid, so you have some structure to it, so you can actually reuse it more efficiently, I would say.
Well, I understand why the four-mil would, I guess my question was kind of coming at the other side is, I mean, isn't your goal really to stop the use of plastic bags? So therefore, why is, are you looking for, as a small step? Or why is the four-mil acceptable?
Can I, can I, right. We didn't, we didn't want to be too extreme. All the other cities allow a bag of a certain thickness, and four-mils is the general standard, to be used. And department stores are already customarily using that type of bag, and so we didn't want to discriminate against that use.
In the big picture of that, you're right, the behavioral goal is to get to the cloth reusable bag. And one of the steps to get to that is that you will be charged, we'll get into the subject, five cents for a paper bag, because you'll no longer have the option. Some people are going to find that, you know, not a good idea, and they'll remember then to bring their cloth bag, and the four-mil will be eliminated. So our goal is definitely to get to the reusable cloth bag and get rid of plastic altogether. But like you said, it is sort of a baby step, and there's just no way we could do that all the way in this venue or this particular ordinance.
So there were no communities that had no plastic? That all of them had some allowable...
Right. Pretty sure, yeah.
In order, yes, definitely.
Is the four-mil compostable?
No.
Pardon me?
The four-mil is not compostable.
No.
No, none of these plastic bags are compostable unless it says so on the bag under ASTM 6400.
Yeah, compostable bag is by virtue, by definition, compost really quickly, and so it deconstructs with light. And, you know, it's really a one-use bag. I mean, I do the composting for a lot of the restaurants in town, sometimes use compostable bags. And I'm lucky if I make that bag home to my farm, to my hogs and my chicken, and it deconstructs.
Well, that's what I thought. I thought I'd read in here that they weren't, and it was kind of a... So what we're doing, dealing with then is if we go with the four-mil, then we're basically putting in some kind of timeframe that we would use those and then consider switching to something that would be more long-term, like the washable cloth bag. Do you want to go those two steps?
The rewashable cloth bag is included within the definition of reusable bag as well. It's just, it allows for the thicker plastics to also meet that definition for the time being. I think that's what they're saying, and then, as the standard changes over time.
Are we looking at it being some kind of sunset on that then, or?
Do any of the other cities have a sunset on those, or any discussion about revisiting them at this point?
I don't think, not that we know of, right away, no.
Could always revisit that if that becomes the norm. But I suspect the costs are going to be prohibitive for them to want to do it, like giving them out like they do now.
Well, and we've got such a good partnership here, you guys are going to be following that within the state, following the trends, will you not? And you would be back before us if there's a trend change.
There also wouldn't be any problem with us being a first instead of following the others.
What about California and Hawaii? How do they address plastic? Do you guys know in their ordinances?
Don't know. Have you read too much of the California one yet? No, I haven't read their ordinances, no.
Have I?
We've, I think we've stuck pretty well with the Oregon ordinances for reference so far.
So are we, are we come to a four-mil as a standard for McMinnville?
Well, I, of course, have no problem also being the first instead of following.
Well, I think, I think I would support that, too, except I think I'd like more information about, we have to be cognizant of the impact on our businesses. So before we would be, you know, the first one to do something like that, I'd like to understand maybe why that four-mil was left in there, talk to local businesses that would be impacted by that. I mean...
I see it being left in there to placate, and maybe just, hopefully, in people changing their behaviors, that it will be easier later to eliminate all plastic bags. But this is a place to start, and people have a hard time with change, so that's probably why we're being a little casual about that. Though I agree with Remy.
Yeah. Four-mil bag, is this the bag that would be, cost you 10 cents or 5 cents if you needed to purchase one?
The stores themselves wouldn't provide plastic bags regardless, so in theory, you yourself would be able to keep the four-mil bags at home if you had them and bring them as a reusable bag. But the businesses or the stores wouldn't provide those. It would be paper or reusable only. But you would still be able to have four-mil bags, find four-mil bags, and use four-mil bags.
To me, like, you're probably better off just going with the fabric to start with, you know, washable, I don't know.
I think the charge is that the ordinance allows the stores to charge for a paper bag or otherwise, since they no longer have the ability to purchase the really cheap plastic.
Yeah, no, I just tend to think that maybe it might be better to go with the cloth bags.
I mean, I, we definitely agree. It's just, like we've been saying, I think, the incrementalism of it, instead of it being such a drastic change. But, yeah, I think we are...
People already in McMinnville have used the cloth bags anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. For recycling.
The department stores also use a larger paper bag.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's not outside reason to just eliminate it entirely.
Even the, even the big box, like Taco Bell now is all paper. You don't, you don't get a plastic bag, even a small one with your taco, it's paper. So everyone's going in that direction, just eliminating the whole idea of plastic.
I like the idea of not having an incremental step.
Go for it.
Yeah, no resistance from us.
Other comments?
So just for clarification, the term reusable bag will not have a reference to any type of plastic bag, but just the cloth reusable, washable bags?
Yeah, if I'm doing the math, that would appear to be what's going to go into the ordinance.
So it'll only be cloth and all that other will be taken out, if that's a direction?
That seems to be, and remember, this is just to come up with an ordinance on paper then, that you can have the public hearing in two weeks and before you make a final decision on it.
So as we go through...
Adam has a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ann.
So everybody, maybe not everybody, but a vast majority has a drawer in their kitchen that has a ton of half-mil bags. What happens if they show up at the store with a handful of half-mil bags? Is that...
That's, they're using a reusable bag, and that's their prerogative, and then no one's going to stop them or charge them five cents.
Yeah, I think, that's an important question, though, Adam, is that this, this ordinance is directed towards vendors, not consumers.
And additionally...
So that they more won't be given out of that kind of bag?
And also, just to throw out, most of the stores do have big tubs for recycling those bags, just in case you have those and want to get rid of them appropriately, you can take them to the store and have the store...
Hey, your guys' presentation a few months ago, you had talked about some buy-back program or that some city did, I don't recall the city, but I remember you guys mentioning that.
Yeah, it was like a leave a bag, take a bag type scenario at the front of stores and stuff.
Actually, Rick Olson had given us, he had said that he was up in Washington, in a small town up there, I think it was Rochester, and that one of the stores had a big bin out in front of it with reusable cloth bags, so a person, if they had forgotten their bags, could pick one up, and then they could always bring them back. And I think that many of us that have plenty of cloth bags would be very willing to donate and put something in there. And I think it's a great idea for people, you know, that find it not real affordable, and for people like me that forget, but I just juggle it out or take it out in the basket instead of using a plastic bag. But, you know, that's, is that kind of what you were referring to?
Yeah. Yeah, that answered my question. Thank you.
I had a couple. Ashland allows for single-use bags for food carryout. What defines that? And also, the next one exempts in-store product bags.
So that's, right, leading into the next question, what are the exemptions? So there's a pretty clear consensus throughout all of the ordinances that there's a difference between this single-use checkout bag and then an in-store product bag. So you see all the time, you know, what about my dry cleaning, my newspaper, my little bag for nuts and bolts, my fruit, my vegetables, my meat, my poultry, what about all those bags? None of those will be exempt because those are considered a product in-store bag. And then to answer your second question, any, basically any business that primarily deals with takeout food or liquids will also be exempt because of that reason, because it's hot food, it's liquid, it's, you know, it's hard to put that in a cloth bag. But so that's kind of the consensus that we've seen, is the difference between the checkout bag, the bag you finally leave with compared to every bag inside the store, whether it's the pharmacy, or nuts and bolts, or fish, or meat, or whatever it is.
I guess we'll get some testimony from our vendors in town of what would constitute that. I've heard discussions concerning getting meats from the butcher area of the store, and it's more conducive to have plastic around that for leakage and...
So those would be allowed?
Yeah.
Those would be allowed?
Yeah, those would be exempt from the ban because it's a product bag.
A good example of that would be Costco. I think you can get, you can put your meat in bags because sometimes they can drip.
Exactly.
But they don't provide anything else at checkout.
Right.
You carry it, you get a box.
That would be the point, right, that's, yeah.
So I think there's a precedence already.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
I'm okay with that.
Any other discussion, then? Because I think we're moving in a different direction. Everybody comfortable then that when we talk about a definition for reusable bags, it's cloth?
Yep.
Okay.
And then we'll take testimony to see...
Yeah, well, but in our initial ordinance resolution, we'll have that.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we can move on, then?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Where are we on our...
I think we hit on number two. Yeah, so the exceptions was part of what Counselor Rudin was discussing, multiple exemptions that exist in various ordinances, if you guys want to talk about that.
I feel like we've covered that.
All of them?
Outside of the, just the bag exemption itself, there pretty, also consistently, there's been hardship exemptions for the business itself to, generally, the language has been more for the smaller businesses in the second tier of the rollout compared to the larger businesses, where they are basically, once they're under the ordinance, they're allowed to supply to the city a hardship exemption that basically says, comparably to a business similar to us, we're under undue hardship, and so we need an extension of that. And some of them, they don't have a limit, some say six months, some say a year, that they're allowed to be exempt until they're under the actual ordinance again. But outside of that, that's, that basically covers most of the exemptions for the bag itself and then the businesses themselves.
So the hardship exemption sunsets, though. So if this were to, if we had originally talked about having a period of time for this to go into effect, so would that be redundant, then? Or would that be, is the, because it sounds like it's only a, it's a limited...
Well, I think it would be...
Time hardship.
Right, so when you, when, so how we've been talking about it, it would be the, the first step would be the first rollout for the big businesses who probably can, can take the fall or whatever it may be, can take the, absorb the cost or whatever, they have corporate to help them out. And then there's usually a six-month to a year period for the small businesses to fall into the ordinance. But then at that point, when the small businesses are supposed to be getting into it, then they can file for an additional six months to a year for the hardship exemption. And then that would be after that exemption, then that's, that's the finality of it. Now you are under the ordinance.
Okay. And the, and what is the hardship definition? It's based on size, capacity, sales?
I think it's, it's, what I read was basically, they called it an undue hardship. So they didn't necessarily define what that was. I think they have to supply that with...
In writing.
In writing, and for you guys to decide whether it is undue hardship or not.
So that is reviewed at some level?
Right.
And that's what I read here. It says hardship exception by written request from a business for up to a year.
Right.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Counsel, the way that we envision this is that you guys pass an ordinance with an amount of time before it goes into effect, because these large stores have inventories of plastic bags, and they need to have time to use them or send them back to corporate. Then, and that big is defined by the council on square footage. So as we looked, you can take a Google map and plot the city and see that there's X number of big-box stores, grocery stores, we all know what they are. Those are big. In six months, they have to comply, then another six months goes by, and the smaller stores go in next, and at that time, they would have this option to exempt. That's how we are proposing it to you. Those timeframes are inevitably up to you.
Reasonable. And we're talking number seven, and basically, who's going to be...
Yeah. You went, cleared down... You went, cleared down to seven.
So we've got an answer to one and two, correct?
Sure.
Well, I think it tied in.
Seven and two are a little tied in together.
Okay, okay, so let's go ahead on seven.
Well, so there's two different kinds of exceptions. There's the exceptions that are talking about the produce bags. And then there are the exceptions that are talking about the business exceptions. So that, is that number two is talking about the produce bags?
Exactly, so number, number two is talking, you know, if you look at, say, take the Forest Grove ordinance, for example. Um, there's a, an exception for retail establishments with ten or fewer employees. That's not a phased-in one, that's just a flat-out exemption for, for those small businesses, retail establishments. There's an exception for, or exemption for, um, the single-use plastic carryout bags, um, produce bags, meat, you know, for meat, things like that. Um, prepared takeout foods, anything where prepared liquids, you know, intended for consumption off premises. Retail establishments, um, let me see, um.
And WIC.
Vendors at retail fairs, such as farmers markets or holiday fairs, um, are, are, have an exemption. So the, the, you know, depending on the ordinances that you look at, there are various exemptions that have been carved out to.
And, uh, unanimous exemption is for WIC, women and infants with children, women with infants and children. Voucher holders would not be affected. They would have to be given a paper sack or a reusable sack by the store at the checkout.
Without charge.
Without charge.
Without.
Without charge. And, um, only Portland says nothing about it, all four other cities, um, use the WIC exemption.
So should we look at each exception type?
So. Yeah, I, I didn't know if you had recommendations, zero waste recommendations on which of those exemptions you thought were more consensus ones from the various ordinances that.
Well, what we've talked about is definitely the product bag, the in-store product bag is a clear consensus that it should be exempt. Um, the WIC, obviously, clear consensus. Um, I think it's pretty important to include that, um, the hardship exemption, although that's not exactly what you guys are talking about at the moment.
It's number five.
Right, and then, uh, there was one other one too, that I had seen, uh, had saw in certain areas that they exempted at. If you decided to, uh, exempt or not exempt city events, they would exempt those people participating in the city event from, um, recording how many paper bags they sent out. So it's, that's kind of a little minutia, but that is another thing to talk about.
On the receipt.
On the receipt, right, they wouldn't have to record that actual pass-through fee that they got. Compared to the big stores are gonna record every pass-through fee. So that's just kind of another small thing with city events, farmers markets, stuff like that.
And, uh, talking about city events, uh, farmers market, it's one. Jay, anything with the parks, the, um, um, community center, our, um, um, recreational programs?
We'd have to determine whether or not the city sponsored event or renting the space.
Right.
To a vendor.
Okay, but as far as, uh, city-sponsored, um, you know, senior center, we're not using, we're not using bags at, at any of those events or locations that we sponsor at, at the present time, are we?
We may have used, uh, you know, like a trap line, we use bags for athletes to pick up their materials and their running. Yes, that would happen, uh, I don't recall those were plastic, um, I think they're more likely to be paper.
Yeah.
I think that so little that you could probably adjust to paper or, uh.
That's what I'm thinking.
Product. I'm trying to think, Home Garden shows and things that when we rent space or someone rents the space from us.
That's not us, yeah. When we're renting space, that's not the city, we're providing a facility.
It's on city property though, right? City sponsored?
Y- y- you know, again, I think they, the difference, the different cities have defined this differently. I'm looking at Eugene's right now and they're very specific that it'd be an event organized or sponsored by the city or Department of the city, as opposed to simply an event that's happening on city property.
So when you, when you send out your requirements for those that you rent to or offer space to, we recommend that you let them know that this city is, um, bagging it better.
Yeah.
And that one of the requirements of coming to our city and, and making money is that you do not bring in plastic bags, we use paper bags. For instance, as you know, we've, we've, um, worked really hard with the Downtown Association and all those events, um, to, uh, make those zero waste. And so now, uh, the Downtown Association, when they queue up all those vendors that line up on Third Street, they send out a notice and say, we're zero waste, please don't bring plast- plastic, please don't bring styrofoam, and sure enough, we're going into our third season, we're seeing a market downturn of all those things and seeing the same vendors over again, they're recognizing us and we've been able to then, um, raise our diversion rate substantially just through the communication of the, you know, event coordinator and the actual people who are participating. So we would hope that the city would put that into the language.
So, yes, you may wanna make the language specific.
Right.
About events on city property being, um, not using single-use plastic bags.
I think we need to be cut and dry on it. If we're gonna do it, we're gonna say that you need to have a cloth washable bag, then it is or it isn't.
I doubt it would, well, I don't wanna, never mind.
Can't think of too much that the city does.
We're, we're talking farmers markets and festivals and those kinds of things.
Turkey Rama, UFO.
Oh.
So these would apply to vendors at those events.
Right.
But it wouldn't apply to prepared food at those events.
Correct, right.
I do know they use the plastic bags to, to bag the turkeys and then they put them into paper bags because they're very dirty.
Yeah, but that would also be the exception.
That's prepared food.
Yeah, that would.
Almost like an impromptu.
Yeah.
A protection bag.
In the park department, they have dispensaries for animal waste in those.
Yeah.
Also exempted.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think, you know, we're gonna, uh, there's going to be some follow-up questions with, uh, already with some other retailers, uh, Pennies and the, you know, those other companies that are gonna be affected. So, um, perhaps this is just another area where we put it in and, you know, the best possible scenario and, uh, we invite that comment to come in, you know, would this be a deterrent to, to vendors? And, and therefore to any events that, uh, is, uh, that impact our city.
Well, the one would be a product bag because, so it would be exempt regardless.
Right.
So I don't see a problem.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked of Jay, of any of the things that we sponsor through the Parks and Rec and Senior Center and that. And I, I don't, I don't remember seeing anything of any.
Why you review this?
Yeah.
Uh, both. Stores under municipal. I mean, that's, you know, the best we're stopping.
Yeah. Even when we did the city fair and we had departments out and we were giving things away, I don't recall using plastic. And that's where, you know, that's where we formed our, our, our foundation is, you guys were a part of us when we had the city fair and what we were trying to get the message out, so.
I don't know, on the library sales, they frequently sell books and stuff, do they use re- plastic bags?
Jenny's back there.
Jenny.
The library within the last year moved to newer bags, pretty tiny beauty bags, cloth bags that can be checked out.
Okay.
Or we also offer cloth bags for two dollars to purchase. We also, in the hardship case, we have bags, plastic bags, that are probably considered non-use plastic bags, but we're recycling them to give to people just, you know, in weather like this, just to get from the building to their car. Um, as far as the book sales, though, those are also, they use reusable recycled bags. So we don't have any, we haven't, um, purchased any plastic bags or non-reusable bags in the last year.
Okay.
Plan to continue that.
And there, we've been tangentially working with Visit McMinnville and we really hope at some time to brand, um, you know, cloth bags as a way to let people know that this is working, so that also is away for the city in these events. If you're gonna give out a bag, there is an opportunity to write McMinnville all over it and.
Well, here, here, we just had our, our offsite yesterday with Visit McMinnville. And I think if we enact this, then a great way is to work with them to get the message out and to brand and, yeah.
What a good fit.
How are we doing?
We're, we're doing, okay.
Which number were we?
Number four, I think.
Kinda three.
Are we three inches outside with snow? No.
Yeah, close. Um, getting worried about folks that have to travel. So, uh, number four, mandatory charges, talked about, some, some communities have no charge for paper bags. Some have a permissive five cent or a ten cent charge, some have a mandatory five cent or ten cent charge. And I think your recommendation was a mandatory five cent charge, wanna talk about that? Ian, what, what's the, the, the thought on that?
What's the actual cost of the paper bag?
Probably. Okay, so the reason for that is, it's a deterrent. So if you show up and you don't have any bags and all of a sudden you're charged fifteen cents because you have three bags. Like, oh, next time maybe I'll bring a cloth bag, or the vendor might say, you know what, right over here, we have a cloth bag for sale. They're, they're as cheap as fourteen cents. You can find a cloth bag for fourteen cents at Albertson's. Um, so that's maybe not gonna work a hundred and twenty-five times, but it'll, it'll work for a while and it's only a couple more cents and you'll use it more often. So it's a deterrent and also, ten cents is too much, um, we felt as a deterrent, it's just some people, you know. Also, it's a way for the vendor to recoup their money. A, a paper bag is more than a plastic, you know, a tear-off pa- um, plastic bags that they're using a thousand times. So, um, the vendor then can recoup some of its cost and not feel as though, you know, it's a sort of a mandate from the city that they can make as an excuse. You sort of become the fall guys, like, well, you know, um.
Throwing a bone to the vendor and it's encouraging change of behavior.
Yeah, it works both ways.
Let me quickly add, um, cities that have not mandated a five cent charge have seen the effect. Portland doesn't mandate a charge for paper sacks. They saw in their first year, a three hundred percent improvement increase in reusable bag use at stores, based on surveys, which is good. But they saw a five hundred percent increase in paper bag use, which is not the intended effect. And so when you, it's a behavior changer when you have a mandatory charge for a paper sack.
And that is why Ashland went to ten cents. They really wanted to push people away from all bags and go right to cloth bags.
And there's an exemption for that for folks on the WIC program, they would not be charged that five or ten cents.
Absolutely, they would get a paper bag for free. And as we understand it, that comes up in the, in the, when they give their card, it's on the register. It's not, they have to have a conver- embarrassing the conversation or anything like, oh, I'm, you know, I, I don't have to pay for my bag, it's just automatic.
So thoughts?
Um, from my understanding, a paper bag costs between three and five cents. And given the, uh, state of the economy in the last four to eight years and shrinking margins and rising cost of products, um, for all of our retailers. I feel that if we're gonna go to a fully clothed bag, we should mandatory charge five cents for a paper bag so that burden is not on the retailer, because if we don't mandate, if we don't mandate it, the retailer's the messenger, the retailer's gonna get all the blowback from the consumer. And we really need to stand behind and support our businesses and say that we as a city did this and not them as a business owner did it.
Right. Allow them to charge, like, they may charge, some of the bigger ones might choose not to and then the smaller ones might could lose, cause they might have to charge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think margins are very important to keep an eye on business-wise and I think we need to have the backbone and not put that on the business owner.
Right.
Good idea.
Right. And that's.
Okay, um.
So five cents?
I'm in support of the five cents, I think that makes sense.
Five, 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 going five, we got ten.
And so, um, I'm sorry, I was, I was, um, not listening. Have you determined that that's a mandated five cents at the stores?
That's what I'm hearing, seeing no objection, we'll move on.
Five, ten cents.
Because, yeah, a big store could just eat that cost and then they would compete unfairly to the small stores.
We talked about hardship exemptions or exceptions, um, primarily that's just the WIC and, and, and.
Fantastic.
They've got that when they get through.
And, and I'm sorry, I know that we're trying to get through this so we don't get stuck here, but, um, why, WIC but not Oregon Trail, what's, where's the?
You know, it's interesting that they don't, uh, talk about that or SNAP programs, um, and I, there may be legal ramifications with those programs and that's the only explanation I have. We haven't di- dived deeply into that.
You raise a really good point, Remi, we should, we should check into that, cause they might not be able to use that card to pay those ten cent fees.
Yes.
It's a really good point.
And we, we are all in favor of that.
Or five cent, five cent.
Anyone who, you know.
Okay, I'll, I'll dig, I'll dig into that a little deeper and see if we can make that broad to meet the intent of the council here. Uh, enforcement of the ban.
It's me again, so, um, uh, it's all over the, all over the, the chart of what different cities are doing. And so I'll just go to the money shot here and, and tell you what we're recommending. We're recommending, um, similar to other, um, a few of the cities, which are doing a phased-in, um, monetary fine if you are found as a grocery store to be wantonly, um, you know, not complying to your ordinance. So within the course of a year, if you are wantonly not complying, you will be given three, you know, opportunities, a warning, you know, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And then you'll start being fined. We don't, um, we're not lawyers, we're gonna leave, we don't really wanna state. You can read the ordinances and look at what the different, um, amounts of money have been charged. But the bottom line is there, there aren't really that many problems. It's not gonna become an enforcement problem, it's not gonna take a lot of city money to go and enforce this ordinance. People just comply, and if there's some lone rangers out there, oh, well, we've done the best we can, it's not that important. It's just not, it doesn't need to be that strict, there needs to definitely be some rules. But, um, we're suggesting that you don't need to get real hard-nosed about it. Just let people know that they need to comply and that those who are, um, really trying to make a statement by not complying will have some teeth.
And, and it seems to be complaint-driven, it's not that the city has inspectors out there, we don't expect that. Uh, it's just if someone calls the city and says, maybe you should check this.
Like one of you.
Absolutely.
So, so Forest Grove, uh, I've been looking at and I like that one the best. Um, they, they have a warning for the first offense, um, after a written warning, a hundred dollar fine for the second offense, third offense is two hundred, fourth offense is five hundred, all within a calendar year, so those offenses all have to be within the same calendar year. And nobody's, you're getting a fine imposed on them more than once per seven-day period. So they get it, they get a warning, they got a week to get into compliance. They're not in compliance, then it's the first fine, they got another week, so it, it steps up over a period of a month. And again, the, the expectation is that that's gonna be a pretty rare.
Yeah, I, if one, if they get a warning, then they know that the city's looking.
Yeah.
And I, I would hate to put code enforcement on, on, on someone where we can't even keep up with the codes that we've got right now that are much, much greater in potential of harm and safety to our.
That seems like a reasonable, um, cause essentially then if you, if you were to not comply, not comply, you'd be getting fined up to, your last fine would be for fifty-two hundred dollars, right? If it was adding a hundred dollars a week, but not more than a week, fifty-two weeks in a year. But you, but it, your overall would be much more than that, but that would be the final amount, so that's a, it's a deterrent.
It's, it's. It's a deterrent.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Does that, uh?
Sorry, uh, yeah, so then the phase-in requirements, um, you know, this is, uh, I guess, some of the weather rubber meets the road. And, um, there are phase-in where you have a longer period of time, if you're a smaller store, based on size or FTE, there's some concern about enforceability and how we go out and determine if somebody has forty-nine point five FTE or fifty, um, versus the, um, square footage of the facility, which you can roughly map out on.
That's what we go with, is the square footage. And ten thousand feet and greater would be the large businesses, ten thousand square feet less and less. Less than ten thousand square feet would be the small businesses. And the way we s- the way we discussed it, uh, for the rollout was for the big stores to be in compliance in six months and the small stores a year. And, um.
And, and then.
So then all business.
Then exception after that.
Exactly, so then all business would be in compliance in a year.
And we would do extensive outreach to the small stores to help them through the rollout process.
Okay, does that sound?
Yep.
I have a question on, uh, compliance, is that, uh, something that the customer can be responsible for? In other words, is there a statement that has been issued by a municipality concerning customer responsibility of making their store comply if they're not? of making their store comply if they're not? I mean, nothing legal, of course, but just a suggestion or a, a threat.
Although we heard, I, I.
Like a citizen suit type?
Hmm?
Like a citizen suit, like they could, they could, no.
Just a suggestion that the.
Or just to kind of make it a point that.
Make a point at the time of purchase, uh, that.
Feel free to report it and, you know, type of.
Something like that, something soft.
Do you something, say something, kind of?
Yeah. You know, it's gotta be a team, a community effort, of course, that's what this is all about.
Exactly.
So we don't have.
We have our, our work cut out for ourselves if you put this ordinance, we really, those are the kind of things that we really wanna go out into the community and prepare everyone, that's why the six-month lead time. And we're perfectly prepared, we realize we've suggested this, that we'll be working with the community and you and with Recology, um, you know, our local hauler, um, to really, to roll this out appropriately so that everyone understands in six months and we can hold everyone's hand and be there when it actually happens that day.
Yeah, I think that's, six months and a year is good.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Think I got what I need?
And I, and I, and I would agree with you, David, that, uh, as I looked at Forest Grove, I think that is a good model to, to start with, we're pretty much same-sized community, the same mind, agriculturally based. I think there's a lot of similarities there with the ramifications that we've, uh, adopted here that might get you where you need to go. Again, one more time around the dais, uh, Alan, any comments or concerns?
No.
Remy?
Thank you for your diligence.
Wendy?
Yeah, thank you guys, great work.
Adam?
Thank you, I appreciate the discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, no further comments, but thank you very much.
Kevin?
Thanks for your patience. This was on a fast track and I think we pumped the brakes a little bit and I really, this has been really good. I think being able to get the whole council involved and have the public see this process has been very valuable, so thank you.
And for those in the audience, just know that this is a learning, you know, we bring something new, we learn it, we discuss it. Now we're to this point and we'll have further discussion with the citizens and we'll come up with something I think that's right for McMinnville. So again, thank you and your diligence and your partnership being with us.
Thank you guys, all for your time.
Usually, usually we don't, uh, but Larry?
Is there a second for comment on here? This is an interesting discussion. I had an experience a while back when I ordered a book and went to the box, the book being, it was a, we bought groceries, cloth bags, appropriate, so I, I guess I'm not too bad myself. I went to the window, the first thing that I dropped in the bag was a box of Grand Rapids. And it went right through it like it didn't have a box. So in the push to get people to use cloth bags, there also needs to be some kind of a stagger, sort of destruction of the bag.
Thank you, Larry. Okay. Um, thank you for a work session that, uh, uh, took us a little time, but I think we've given the direction that we need to give.
Did we get, uh, the definition of the size of the business for the phase-in?
Ten, uh, sorry, ten thousand square feet was the, what they recommended.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, uh, we still have a few other items to move forward with. Our consent agenda tonight would include minutes of November twenty-second, December thirteenth, both the regular meeting and the dinner meeting. Is there anyone that would like to take anything off of our consent agenda? If not, uh, uh, can I get a motion?
I so move.
Okay. A second? Uh, it has been moved by Kelly, uh, by Counselor Manke and.
Council President.
What's that?
Council President.
Oh, help me through this. Council President Manke and seconded by, um, Counselor Garvin, uh, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any, uh, opposing by this, uh, signifying by saying nay, it's been passed unanimously. Uh, we now have two resolutions, um, to go over that, uh, we've talked in our dinner meeting and, um, I'll turn that discussion over to, to, to Marcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the first resolution is to approve, uh, a contract with S- Smith, Wager, Brucker Consulting Firm. As you know, we're beginning the budget process for two thousand seventeen eighteen and we've been discussing as a management team, not only short-term planning, but, uh, for the upcoming budget, but also longer-term strategic and, and financial planning as well. Uh, we're currently working with, uh, Debbie Smith-Wager and Kathy Brucker to provide some accounting, uh, assistance for us and to draft our financial statements. Uh, as I've been working with them, I've, uh, talked to them about whether they can help us with, uh, our budget process and our financial planning. One of the things that they can do for us is to, uh, review our fiscal forecast. You know, we've used that quite, uh, a lot in the last several years. We want to extend that out to five years instead of the three years we've done in the past. Uh, Kathy and Debbie can help us with reviewing all the assumptions that go into that forecast and, and doing some research for us on, uh, health insurance, for example, and what we might expect with, um, increases in health insurance costs in the next few years. Uh, they can also analyze our current sources of revenue, possibly come up with some ways we can maximize, uh, revenue that we already have and, uh, identify some potential additional revenues. Uh, task order number one that is included in this contract is, uh, the statement of work and it includes a not-to-exceed amount of ten thousand dollars. Upon execution of this contract, I'll begin working with Debbie and Kathy, uh, next week and we'll determine a schedule for the deliverables and completion of the work. Our intention is to bring the information back to the council, uh, in the next several weeks in a timely manner as we work through our, our budget process for two thousand seventeen eighteen. So we would recommend that the council approve this contract.
Thank you, Marcia. Uh, any council discussion on this resolution?
No, it's just much needed.
So hearing none, a motion?
I so move.
So move?
Second.
Okay, so, uh, it's been moved by Council President Manke and seconded by Counselor Jeffries, uh, to accept Resolution, uh, twenty seventeen zero one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed by, signify by saying nay. Note that, uh, this is passed unanimously, uh, at the council level. We have a second resolution, uh, Marcia, if you would update us on that.
The resolution that is before you is to approve a contract with Plan B Consultancy to provide the city with some professional accounting services. As you know, we currently have an open accountant position in the Finance Department and from January through about April, finance staff is very focused and, uh, dedicated to budgeting and forecasting. The contract with Plan B Consultancy will, um, allow them to provide us with some monthly accounting services, uh, such as just general ledger, monthly closing and bank reconciliations and, um, some general work so that we can, uh, stay current on those monthly closings, which are very important to the budget process, that our, uh, management team has current information. And, uh, you, in the contract, there is a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-five thousand, although I don't expect that, um, we will, Plan B staff will be working for us for that many hours. I estimate at this time that it would be probably forty to fifty hours a month, um, through, from January through April. So I would recommend that the council approve this contract.
Thank you, Marcia. Council discussion?
Well, uh, I, while I, I, I want you to have all the support you have and I'm going to, uh, give you, in my, my one say and it will be to, of course, give you that support, but, um, I, uh, also, um, um, feel, feel that I should express, I feel it's so unfortunate that we haven't been able to find a qualified applicant. Um, the, the questions that I was asking you earlier during the dinner meeting, um, and really what I wanna highlight here is that what you brought up earlier about taking this as an opportunity to, to look at how, um, that's going to be structured moving forward, I think is a, is a very positive change. So, um, so while I feel like, while, while this is, it, I understand the necessity of it, it's, uh, um, it's a little, it's, I don't, I don't quite have the words for it, but I, I definitely want you to have the support, especially during this crucial time. And hopefully we can, by the end of April, have some solution that comes out so that these, uh, this, the supplementation doesn't have to continue.
I, and I do appreciate that support very much and so does my, uh, staff in the Finance Department. And I agree with you that the contracting for these accounting services in interim, uh, it's an interim, it's a stopgap, basically. And would certainly, uh, as you said, look at, how do we restructuring the department? Is there a different, um, way that we can, uh, define the accountant position that we have open and different duties? So we will certainly continue to pursue filling that position.
In difference to Marcia, she's been very, um, creative in trying to make this work. Probably a major portion of the problem is that the particular job position is underfunded. And so it's a budgetary consideration for the future too. And I would also like to support you, Marcia, in what you're talking about in our dinner meeting. It's really important to find the right person for the right seat and make sure you're very clear about what you're looking for. And I appreciate that you're taking your time to decide, see currently what is it that we really need and what's the best, what's the best way to fill that role. So if this is a step that helps you to really clearly define that so that we can, we can go out and find the exact right person for that spot, I think it's time well spent. So I, I applaud you for doing that and trying to be really careful about our hires.
And I think as we go through the budget process, if we're not able to hire what we're looking for, then it's a discussion item around the table at the, at our, our budget discussions and from a financial standpoint. Because Kelly and I, being on audit committee and we've having a number of meetings, we know how diligently she's gone out and we've seen people, but, uh, we're, we're just not at that level to get the kind of caliber person that we need. And it would be a turnstile of somebody coming in and then looking for that other right position and then us turning it. And in the long run, that costs us a heck of a lot more.
I also understand from what I've been told by other finance directors and our consultants that accountants are in high demand right now for whatever reason. And especially accountants with governmental accounting experience. So I've been told many times that we are not the only ones in this position.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the resolution.
I move to approve, uh, Resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero two.
Second.
And Alan, it has been moved by Remy and it has been seconded by Alan, uh, that we move, uh, forward on, uh, approving the Resolution twenty seventeen dash two. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in favor or, or those in opposition signify by saying nay. The, uh, resolution is passed unanimously. Uh, with that, we find ourselves now, um, under advice and information and as I look outside, I think, uh, advice and, and, uh, information can be held for a later time. Um, again, it's good to have our department heads here and those that are here, again, candidates. If I'm not mistaken, Jeff, you're staying the night and the other two were planning on going home, weren't you? Well, we've got cots in the back room. That's a part of our emergency, uh, precautions. But again, we'd like to, again, welcome, uh, uh, each of you, Ron and Dan and Jeff. And, uh, we look forward if the weather cooperates tomorrow, how we're gonna do this. But, um, I will, I will hike down here in boots and be a part of this, so.
Uh, I do, I just wanna throw out really quickly.
Sure.
Because it, it, it will be too late, uh, at the next one, that, um, uh, a fellow counselor here, Alan Rudin, is going to be speaking at a forum on affordable housing, I believe held at the library, yes?
No, it's gonna be at, uh, Community Plate.
Oh.
No.
Well.
Isn't it Community Plate on the twenty-third?
People stop at Community Plate on the way to the library, so that's how I got confused.
Maybe I'm wrong, I, I do know of a.
It's not Community Plate, it's the, uh, Yam Hill.
Alec Commissary.
Thank you, yeah.
Alec Commissary, on, on January twenty.
Alec Commissary, I really blew it.
On Monday, January twenty-third.
Right, maybe January twenty-third.
And I think you, you do need to reser, reserve your space in advance, um, uh, and so if you have questions, I can get you that information.
And also.
Probably recommend you attend.
The, uh.
Sorry about that.
The Council of Government's annual award dinner is on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, and we need to let them know if you're interested in attending that. Melissa, did you get anything from the cog on that? They're gonna want us to start paying to go.
So that's January?
January twenty-fifth.
And so I think we ought to get on that right away so that we can, uh, have a table and sit together and.
I'll be there.
And I, I need to look at, uh, whether that be one or two for me.
I believe the cutoff for, um, for that is the fifteenth, you need to have the money by the fifteenth.
So that's on a Monday night?
The Wednesday, the twenty-fifth of January.
Oh, twenty-fifth, okay.
So coming up on the cutoff date for.
We're on it.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, I'd just like to remind everybody that there'll be an open house for the candidates. If you haven't had a chance to meet the city manager candidates yet, there'll be an open house tomorrow evening, five o'clock at the Grand Ballroom for an hour and a half. Come, if you're over twenty-one, you can get a drink ticket and, uh, meet the candidates.
And great hors d'oeuvres, as we know, are provided. So, well, with that, anything further from the group? We close our meeting this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.